It is five thirty on February twenty six, twenty twenty four. Alpine Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting will call it to order. The Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Do we have any public comments? No, we're not.
Okay, do we have any public hearings?
We do. Alrighty, so our first public hearing is public hearing in citizen views and comments regarding especially use permit twenty twenty four dash zero one dash zero two, especially his permit application allowing the applicant Tara Vaughn to establish a one chair beauty salon in an R two, two family district zone. The property in question is located at four oh one West Sol Ross and is legally described as the east eighteen point eight nine feet of lots eight, nine, ten, all of lots one, two, and three, in that portion of platted alley line in between said lots. All out of block twenty eight, original town site of Alpine, envelope one eighty four, plat records of Brewster County, Texas. The property ID of the subject property is three, three, five, six, five, zero. The record property owners are Thomas Robinson and Karen Chapman. The current zoning of the property is R two, two family district. The zoning classification, if the rezoning is approved, will remain R two, two family district.
Do we have any comments on that?
About me?
It's only from the public.
At this point, okay.
One second here. Do you have any public comments? Apparently no public comments. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
I guess we do have a quorum present with Commissioner Portio.
And you want to mention what with the Commissioner Little?
Commissioner Little has resigned.
Yes. Okay, do we have, has everybody read the minutes and do we have an approval of the minutes of the previous board meeting?
I have a question. In the minutes. They in your package? The previous minutes. So in the package, then again, guys, bear with me, this is my second meeting. Karen Eaves and Darren Nance were also present. They're not on your list of those present. I don't know if that matters or not.
No, Catherine Eaves was not present at that meeting. Darren Nance was, but he was.
Was it the meeting I was at? He was sitting right there.
He was not here. He was not here, that was a meeting before that. She was not here that last one.
Okay, what about Darren?
Darren was not present in an official capacity for the board, he was just present to adjournments, but I didn't include him.
Okay, alright, then the only other question that I have is, I made the motion that we approve the M one, but I thought, and I may be wrong, I thought that I made that motion with the condition that parking lots be added as an approved use. And I can't say that absolutely positively, I'm seventy years old and I'm not as sharp as I once was, so.
Yeah, I don't remember all that, but I mean, if the commission would like, they can table it and I'll re-review the video.
Or we can amend it at some point. Or remind you what, so the, with the M one, and I understood why we wanted to do the M one, because we didn't have one, and I'm gonna bring up something similar to this as some of the ordinances that we're talking about going forward. But, and I've been in city council meetings before when somebody made a motion with the proviso that something be amended, and then it got seconded, and I thought I did that, but I, let's not go pursue that any further, so. Well, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I do not remember any parking discussion with the M one.
Okay.
Did you make a motion to approve?
I do.
Okay.
Mine was a different page.
Okay, we have five discussion items.
Can we just get a vote really quick?
Yeah. I.
I, I guess.
Okay, we're gonna move on to discussion items, discussion items are not voted on, discussion items are things that we are considering, and you can take home and study. I will let Guy read the first discussion item A. Go ahead and read that.
We're gonna read each one of them?
Yes, they're very short.
Alright, discussion, discussion regarding proposed updates to chapter fifty four, Health and Sanitation, Article Four, Offensive Conditions on Property Division Two, nuisances to the city code, Alpine Code of Ordinances, G Fielder, Commissioner.
Okay, so we have in front of us the the sections, Division Two nuisances. This is, these are the current code of ordinances, correct, Secretary?
Yes.
And, Mr. Commissioner Fielder, you are recommending some changes to this.
I am recommending changes, yes.
Okay, we're not gonna go over the individual changes.
No, I don't intend to go over the individual changes today, maybe just a couple of examples, but.
Yeah, first, first the, the big picture.
The big picture is that Alpine is changing, some of these ordinances are old. This particular ordinance does not include livestock. It does not include flies, which are usually the product of livestock. We've also had recent incidences. Or Jessica, sorry. Where we've had squatters move into derelict buildings. We also had a tent city, but I believe it was actually out in the county.
We're not in the city.
Yeah, it was out in the county, but I think these all constitute nuisances, and I would like to propose that you guys allow me to take a first pass at updating this. And then, I'll send you a marked up thing, Matt, you've seen some of the things I've done. Everything will be laid out, I'll put comments on the right hand side, if you'll trust me to do it all, I think it'll go a whole lot faster, because I am going to ask for, I don't think substantive changes, but probably anywhere from five to ten changes for each of the ordinances we're gonna talk about. I wanna, I wanna include squatters. I wanna change some of the terms and definitions. Just things like that. I'm sorry?
You just wanted to update it.
I just wanna update it, and again, things are changing, new things are happening here. Again, this may not be the right forum, but police officers, police departments, and military and government agencies are now training their employees in the correct use and the incorrect use of pronouns and the sixty four different genders. It can, if we wanna just start changing him and her and his and that to them or they. The simple change, it's, it's one of the non-effective pronouns, and it's coming.
Do I have a question? When was the last time that it was an update on this?
This particular ordinance was updated in two thousand nine. And you'll, you'll notice under each section, there's some references in parentheses, and that should point to the year.
Oh, I see, yeah. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Also, we were revising, right now they got a work group that's gonna revise, make some more changes to the short term rental agreements. For term rental agreements.
Just nuisances right now, just nuisances.
Well, nuisances will become part of that. We can talk about that in, in comes up next.
Yeah, we're just doing one item at a time.
Alright.
Do you have the one you do both?
No. No, every commissioner should read it and be familiar with the code of ordinances, and you can recommend changes also, every commissioner can. And so this is items of discussion right now, and if you have any, right now, we don't have the recommended changes, but we will get those.
I will get them to you within the next week, so we have plenty of time.
That it'd be best if we had a consensus, though, like a discussion, if y'all have any ideas, would you like to break it up into teams? Or do you want to go ahead and, you know, delegate that to one person to work on it? What are y'all feelings about that?
I think he brought it up, let him go ahead and pursue his, and then we can open it up for discussion once he puts his changes in there. I mean, I'd like to see what he's proposing, because it may be the same thing we're gonna talk about.
And I think it'll go faster if you look at what I've done, and then, and then just say approve, 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 or disapprove, and we discuss it. It'll go a lot faster than if we go down through the codes and ordinances, paragraph by paragraph, and discuss them.
I do wanna bring out that the Texas government code covers a lot of what you're trying to add into our ordinance, and that supersedes our ordinance, so we go to that first with a lot of the flies and the livestock. The Texas government code does cover all that, and as a code enforcement officer, we use that as well as our ordinance. And a lot of the things that we enforce.
Okay, does it harm our position if we are redundant?
I mean. Well, you know, I remember also to consider HB twenty one twenty seven, the Death Star Bill, that basically states that if we can't set anything more strict than what state law has, if it's in eighth certain.
This won't be more strict, so.
And yeah, there's just that to consider.
Yes, and, and I have been on the other side of the table with these ordinances, and it's sometimes it's hard to gather them all up. And if, if it's in the state code, how do I get to the state code? If it's in our code, I know how to get to that. So again, you know, maybe perhaps your, your, part of your job is to make sure we don't run afoul of a Death Star, but the changes I'm, I wanna make are, I don't believe are going to. Most of them just deal with clarifications. So, we give it a try and see?
So our recommendation is we're gonna read this over the next month, and we'll look at the changes, and then we will, once we're ready, we'll discuss it again.
Then I'd like to be ready at the next meeting.
Well, we'll see, so we're not making any, every commissioner gets to have a say. Okay, let's move on to discussion item B, that's gonna, and go ahead and read that.
Discussions regarding proposed updates to chapter twenty six, Civic and Cultural Affairs and Facilities, Article Three, Noise to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, Guy Fielder, Commissioner. Pretty much the same type of things. When, what, what year was this one done, Gio? It says.
It was pretty recent.
Twenty twenty three, twelve thirteen. So, there's, I think there's omissions in this. And the reason I say that, and again, you know, stop me if I'm violating something, but we've gone through the S T R. The two major complaints in the S T R is noise and parking. And I think those are gonna drive us to making some changes to these ordinances so that we can be more complete in the S T R. So again, I propose the same thing, allow me to go through, mark it up, track the edits, you will see my comments, you will see the changes. If you don't want me to try to make the pronouns gender neutral, I won't. You know, tell me what you want, and I'll try to, try to provide it.
So this particular ordinance, it was originally recommended by the music advisory board. So it should really be recommended again by them, any changes.
Okay, can I make some changes and send it to them?
Yeah, if you want, you can propose changes, and then we can, you know, share that with them.
Okay, but not, not from the planning zoning, this would be as a citizen.
That's fine, and I will route everything I do through Gio, so that as, as much as possible, he can try to keep me compliant.
Is the music advisory board still functioning?
Yeah, it just doesn't need to often, if one of the boards did, you know, means periodically, maybe once to both of them.
Once, twice a year?
We actually need that board in order to be compliant, to, I mean, to meet the requirements for the Texas, what is it, it's from the governor's office, music friendly community.
Right, okay. Any questions from commissioners before we move on to the next one? Okay, we're gonna move on to discussion item C.
What a surprise, it's me again. Discussion regarding proposed changes to chapter ninety four, Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four, Stopping Standing and Parking in the Alpine Code of Ordinances, G Fielder, Commissioner.
Again, give us the big picture first.
Well, the big picture is, I think there's some things in here that need to be changed, and I think part of those changes are gonna be driven by our S T R stuff.
We're not talking F T R.
I understand, but they.
Meeting on that.
Documents need to complement one another, not contradict one another. And I'm not claiming that they don't, that they contradict one another, but I am claiming that they don't necessarily complement one another. And that's why I would like to have, have a go at them. And again, this is probably off topic, but there's a lot happening in Alpine, folks. That's gonna be probably the next discussion item that I'm gonna talk to, if you wanna see, because if we can, we can jump right to there.
No, no, that's not an item.
Fact that we don't have, you know, as she mentioned, the state, you know, ordinances for if you can look at those, because we don't know what they are, and know, and then sort of integrate up in with this, and that's to be helpful to us, knowing that we're following the state as opposed to just the city as well, I like that idea, yeah.
Okay, so, anything, any comments you wanna make on this?
No, I'm, again, I'm happy to, to take the charge and review that against this stuff.
Once again, every commissioner should take a look at that, and if you have any input. We would definitely appreciate that. Any further questions? Okay, we are going to move on to, find the page here. D, discussion item D.
And that's me again.
That's you again, and that's.
Discuss the multiple options and staying informed on city business, city news, and other information pertinent to serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's what I was referring to. So if you look down here in the background, Gio has been kind enough, there are two actually very good newsletters, one is published by Rick Stevens, Ward Five, about what's going on in Alpine. Another one is being published by Darren Nance, Ward Three. And I really believe that one of the responsibilities of this commission is that we know what's happening in our community.
I could not find Darren Nance's.
You could not find this one here?
Nope.
Well, okay, problem with the Substack, there's another way to get to it, I may have to help you there. Problem with Substack is they want you to subscribe, if you don't have a subscription, and yeah, I was in the same boat, that's why I know there's a workaround.
If you're checking that, darrenance.substack.com, you can sign up there, just type your email address in.
Okay. Yeah.
And that's, that's all I wanted to say there is, if, if you can't find the time to attend the city council meetings and the other meetings that are going on, then, you know, please take the time to read these newsletters, and it's, there's a lot of information in there.
Yeah, these are good, good newsletters, I like them.
Oh gosh, me again.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that was the title on my slide, that should have been.
That's me.
Okay.
Exactly.
Sorry.
Okay, I wanted to discuss something that, from planning and zoning, my view of kind of the history of Alpine as a historian at the museum, and I do wanna congratulate the museum on being voted the number one small town museum in the nation, and it, and it actually is, it deserved it. I kinda looked at Alpine, maybe a little bit different way than, than, than some people look at, I looked at it in chunks of history. And so almost like double gener, two generations at a time. The history of Alpine from eighteen eighty, when the railroad came through and Alpine was founded, up to about nineteen forty five, the end of World War Two, we were a railroad and ranching town. Basically, all the ranches down south and a few in the north, and they, they raised cattle, shipped a lot of cattle, of course, to the soldiers during the World War One and World War Two. And, a lot of that industry, of course, was not sustainable, but we, that's basically what we were, we were ranching and railroad, not that we aren't still, but ranching and railroad communities. At the end of World War Two, I, I, I historically see a, a major new pattern went in. Not nineteen forty five to around twenty ten, another sixty five years or so. After the war was over, the G I bill was introduced at the end of the war, and that changed Alpine, that changed the United States. We ended up getting a lot of veterans out of the war, coming to college. And during that period of nineteen forty, like I said, till about twenty ten or so, one of every four people in Alpine was a college student. One of every three people in Alpine was either working for the university or was a student there. The veterans came in to get their degrees, a lot of them were, were locals, it is those veterans that took, it took twenty years, but those veterans are the one that led the charge to integrate Alpine. And then around twenty ten, I noticed a, a new change, and of course, I saw this in the classes I was teaching at Sol Ross, we ended up with diminishing classes, diminishing students sitting in front of me. But more students online, and they actually weren't even here in Alpine, they were just sitting there watching on the computer or on the, on the TV, on the internet. And at that same time, with this increase or decrease in students, we had an increase in tourism. More people searching online, more people wanting to visit the Big Bend, more Airbnbs and more tents and yurts and bubbles and all that springing up down south. And we, where it used to be that where Big Ben National Park and Big Ben State Park had a tourist season, it became a year round season, and tourists were, were, were coming to the Big Bend. And so I think we are very well positioned to be the, the top tourist town in the Big Bend region. We are not the largest town in the Big Bend region, Boynaga is the largest town in the Big Bend region, but not too many people are going there, they're going down to the park, they're going to the state parks, they're doing the river, they're doing, they're, they're going birding, they're going rockin', rock hounding and all sorts of stuff, a lot of the nighttime sky stuff that we have worked on, that's gonna be a major tourist attraction, and that's something that, that, that we, that we need to be working on. The aesthetics of coming into town, that, that we, it's hard to overvalue that, and it is amazing how good we are right now. When was the last time you drove into Presidio? From, from Martha, and if you haven't done it, do it. That's not what we wanna happen, second, Presidio is the second largest town in the Big Bend, we don't want to look like that. So we are gonna be focusing, I think, on that historical zone, we've been working on historical zone, we're working on with here with the planning and zoning, we're working on it with the Alpine Historical Association, which I'm on also. Lodging, Airbnbs, that's another important thing we're working on, parking. Once again, like I said, the nighttime skies, we are, we are working on some important things, so that's why I want you to know that, that's, we really appreciate all these, uh, these changes, but, you know, we have to keep this in mind, that, that we are, we're working towards the, the betterment of Alpine as part of the Big Bend region. So that was my comment.
May I add to that?
That was a comment? That would might, that would, oh, it's a discussion.
Okay, so I would like to say yes, absolutely, here, here. The Alpine Business Alliance has voted, we're gonna create an economic development. We believe, and everybody here is invited to come to the economic development. We're gonna focus on tourism. But we're also do need to do some cleanup, and then, we talked about this before. I don't think, I don't know, I can't say that we're worse than Presidio. But every entrance into Alpine has got boarded up buildings, derelict signs, broken out windows.
Drive to Presidio. It's the last time you went.
It doesn't, I don't, I don't live in Presidio, and I don't wanna be Martha either, I wanna clean up Alpine.
But you should drive.
I do, but I wanna clean up Alpine, and it's gonna be, as he points out, and he points out very correctly, the first impression people get are the, the way into town, there's four major ways into town, and every one of them has derelict buildings. We're trying to bring new businesses to town. If you were coming here as somebody who was gonna expand your business or put a business in Alpine, and the very first thing you noticed were dilapidated buildings that were boarded up, would that make a good impression?
You're speaking right up Commissioner Laxton's alley.
Alright, so again, you know, here, here, let's, let's get busy.
Previously about the signing, and I went through and actually did, took pictures of signs throughout Alpine, and then I had to miss the meeting, and it got, I think it got tabled or something after that, but there, there are many, many signs that are in disrepair that you just, you know, as I said, I had a gentleman, I don't know if he's still going to, at the time, to connect him with the owners to, that he was willing to take the sign down, and no charge to the owners, if he could have scrap metal. You know, it's just, I think that's why we have broken signs in Alpine, is because it's so expensive to deal with it, and maybe they're not gonna replace the sign, they put something smaller up, and, and with the dark skies, or you know what I'm talking about, we need to bring all of that down anyway. Going forward, and we also had a conflict in that particular one where they, the size of the signs. It showed, I think, the, the new ordinance had two hundred square foot, and ours, it was, should, it was way too much. It needed to be brought down, and I even went out and measured what I call monument signs, you know, the signs around Sol Ross, I consider those monument style signs, or if you don't want anything bigger than that, and bring them down lower, so people can see it, so I, I totally agree with all of that, and I still have the stuff on that, I think.
Well, let's continue the discussion.
And I can I build on that? So Abby is, you know, lives catty corner from me.
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, she does, she does, and she periodically come over and we'd share a bottle of wine and talk. And this was one of Abby's big bugaboo, she wanted to clean up a lot of this stuff.
I sent her all my emails on it.
Yeah, and, and she shared some of that with me, and, and again, this is case in point, correct me if I'm wrong. So, I was on the Code and Ordinances Commission for a while, and we condemned the building. The building had previously been condemned five years earlier. In the five years, squatters had moved in. The neighbors had been harassed, everything that wasn't nailed to the building or cemented into the ground had been stolen. The, they, they had had threats of physical violence, this is all testimony as part of that. We finally did tear it down. But it cost fifteen thousand dollars to tear it down, and ten thousand dollars of it was just what we paid the waste treatment place to dump all the stuff that we got. So again, it's maybe not where it needs to start, but we need to think about, if we're gonna start trying to clean up the town, two thirds of the cost shouldn't be throwing things into a landfill that we, the city own.
Okay, just a thought. We'll pick this up, I want, once again, finishing that discussion, I am very positive.
Well, I think you talk about the couple items, you talk about coming into town, it's crashed out some places, and I totally agree. Coming in Presidio is not exactly an apple, it's a little bit apples and oranges, because that's really the county that's trashed Presidio. Coming to Presidio proper, I've never seen such a economically challenged plant, a city town is so clean. Most of them are filthy, the old us is dirtier than Presidio's. So, I mean, Presidio is not so bad, is my point, I wanted to defend Presidio. Beyond that, the main intersection in town, you've got, I can't believe that's still the way that we're, you know, we're, lost cart writings. You've got fences falling down, junk laying all over the place, it's the main intersection. And nobody has, and I don't know who the person is that owns that property, but it seems like, I don't know if your, your fines are sufficient enough or for you, if you're even fining him for the stuff that's being fallen down there. But it's been that way for a couple of years. And it's the ma, and I, I, I get that there's a lack, a real lack of attention on that point, because it's so obvious when you pull into that stoplight, trash right there. And it's been sitting there for two years. And what I mean by trash is fences falling down.
The Kyle, right, what you're talking about, the Kyle gallery.
Next to it, yeah, that area, yeah, and it puzzles me, we talk about these big plans, but we can't even clean up that little area there, and I'm going. I mean, I don't mean to be critical at all, I just mean, can we, like, start with some of the more complaining about the more important ones?
Absolutely.
When Abby was president, we have pictures, and, and I don't know, when you said they already have been informed, the businesses, remember?
With the signs, yes.
The signs and in, in the trash businesses, that Abby wanted to go, to go and help them fix this, but you said you already.
Yeah, there's gotta be a way to make it.
Care of that.
More expensive to keep it abandoned than it is.
Yeah.
I do wanna bring up a point with the discussion item, just because I've lived in Alpine for twenty years. I've worked as. Um, I've worked as um an employee um in other places. And the cost of living, I I'm just gonna bring out the elephant in the room here, okay? The cost of living is very high. We have no long-term rentals. They're very few and if they are available, they're very expensive. For me personally, I cannot afford a house in the city of Alpine. It makes me wanna move because I can't afford a house here. So for you to wanna make these arrangements to make Alpine a more beautiful place, it also has to be a place people can afford. And a lot of people could move here and they realize they cannot live here because they cannot afford to live here because the cost of living is too high.
Mm-hmm.
Making these changes, yes, they sound wonderful and delightful, don't get me wrong, but you have to keep in mind the median income. The the majority of the people that are living and working in the city of Alpine are not making that much money. And so when you tell them they have to correct something like a sign, you wanna make everything one of your mental science. Even Rich Portillo had brought up, it can be twenty to fifty thousand dollars to change a sign. So just for the electrical, just for the infrastructure. So we have to keep in mind that we wanna support our locals that can live and survive here because I can't, I can't live here and survive here.
My recommendation on the local signing was to bring it down and I actually went around Alpine and took photos of local small businesses and their signs. And I would say ninety percent of them were in compliance with what we wanted to do. There was very few, the ones that were out of compliance were the ones that are up and broken.
Yep, so we got some stuff to do, so.
No, I'm good. I just, uh, that's it. I just, that corner's always, um, yeah, it give me a problem. I'd clean it up myself, but I'd probably get arrested.
Okay, we do have one action item tonight. Secretary, do you wanna read that?
Yes, actual item A is approve a recommendation to the city council to approve special use permit twenty-two four dot zero one half zero two. A special use permit application allowing the applicant to launch to establish a one-chair beauty salon in an R two, two-family district zone. The property in question is located at four oh one West Sol Ross and is legally described as the east eighteen point eight nine feet of lots eight, nine, ten, all of lots one, two and three and the portion of the platted alley line between said lots. All out of block twenty-eight, original downside of Alpine. Envelope one eighty-four, plat record to Brewster County, Texas. The property ID of the subject property is three five six five zero. The record property owners are Thomas Robinson and Karen Chapman. The current zoning of the property is R two, two-family district. The zoning classification, if the rezoning is, I'm sorry, that's a typo, if the special use permit is approved, will remain R two, two-family district. And we just need a motion in a second.
Do we have a motion? I I just have a question about that.
We just need a motion in a second to discuss.
Sorry.
If I lax in, seconded by. And you can go.
Okay, now, right.
What, they were going to, uh, maybe it says it here and everybody knows it but me, but um they were going to amend uh something in the code that uh it a- actually was a bullet item that excluded Paris lawn, right?
They were just gonna strike that.
Yes, so that happened and that's why.
Oh, they did.
Especially the permit is being considered, since the ordinance was updated to.
Okay. No, that's what we're doing.
Good.
I have a question. See, that council voted to approve, uh, why do we have to discuss again? It was already approved.
So the council voted to update the ordinance, um, which allowed the beauty salon to be established by special use permit. But then the applicant ne- needed to actually submit a special use permit.
Re- recent.
Which is uh what's being considered now and then council will consider your recommendation.
So this is what has to go to city councils.
Yeah, I need a permit, you know.
Have to be approved process, the applicant apply for.
So we're done need to uh uh vote on, I said, uh, new.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, you're gonna vote on this application and then uh the council will vote on it after as well.
Oh, gosh, do we have a motion to approve?
It's already done. Discussion.
We'll double approve.
We're in discussions still.
Still in discussions. Does anybody in the audience have something to say?
No, they're.
Then I, then then, believe it or not, I do. So, you know. God bless Tara. This has been a Chinese fire drill from the get-go.
I know.
And what I would like to suggest in this, I'm suggesting a lot of stuff and it's a lot of work and I'm happy to take the lead on every bit of it. But we started putting in what could be and could not be in certain areas. We did that with the M one. And unless we wanna do a Chinese drill every time somebody wants to do something like this. And and another point I need to make or I would like to make, once we let the genie out of the bottle, we can't put it back.
And but I see no reason.
And I'm, I voted for it. I voted for it.
Already, right?
Right.
Struck because it it did emit um, beauty salons and barber shops in in R two. And you know, I'm a personal believer in, like I said, I had an aunt who, you know, used her garage as a one chair because she had a a husband that she had to be home with and she couldn't leave. And he was invalid. So I I don't, and and every time, like, let's say Tara moves on to another location or something. In order, you can't just make it another beauty shop. They have to come back in and do a special permit every single time. So I don't know why we need to do any more changing to it, to be perfectly honest, because it was pretty well laid out and I was like, we just need to strike this and let her go with that.
I don't know what other things that you didn't strike out, but
We did.
What what do we do to a lady that wants to become a seamstress and alter people's clothing? Because if it's in her garage, it's part of this.
Oh, it's true.
We're, we're getting a little bit away from the discussion.
The discussion is.
We're voting on this item, just this item only.
Alright.
So we are voting our on this item.
Well, he knew uh on the ordinance, it was a restricted, restricted that it was not allowed for beauty salons in that area, right? Am I right for R two? So that's why we are meming that.
Right.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So now we are.
Couldn't get a special use permit.
It wouldn't allow special use permit.
At all.
She struck it first. Yeah, you had to strike it first.
Right, right.
You didn't come to this meeting, so that's why.
And that was, that was a good um compromise, I think, for the neighbors and and it still allows her to open up her beauty salon. And the neighbors didn't get any commercial changes on the property around them cuz they were trying to move into. You know, and we kept it the way it was. And so to me, in my personal opinion, this was the best way to get everybody to sort of meet in the middle and be where it needs to be. And it it made the the neighbors happy too. They're not complaining about it now. So it's good, I think.
Well, that's a strange looking house, is all I got. That's what's left of the stuff that I know. Are we ready to vote?
I believe so.
Aye.
My favorite.
Aye.
Yeah, finally.
Me do both hands for.
Actually, any other board meeting comments? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, next to mention.